Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole. We're going to go ahead and get started today. We do have a number of action items before we get to two really important briefings. But before we get to those, I want to take this opportunity to turn it over to our city manager and then to our deputy city attorney to provide us with some introductions. We have some Grow 1000 students with us today as well as some interns. So I'll start with our city manager so that he can introduce them and thank them for working with us in the executive office.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me this point of personal privilege. I'd like to acknowledge two of our summer interns. That's part of our Grow 1000 Academy. We have two versions of the Grow 1000 program this year where we have almost 200 students. Some are in high school and others are college students. And I would like to begin by acknowledging Pablo Villavazo, who is a former member of the Mayor's Youth Council. There's Pablo there. And he's also a member of the Promise Zone and a Grand Rapids Community College student. And we are so glad to have him in our office. The regular high school Grow 1000 program will be concluding next week. It's only a six-week program, but the academy is a longer period where we work with college students, and he'll be here through November. And also, I'd like to acknowledge Alexander DeWes. He's a software engineer IT specialist and has a passion for technology. And we are grateful to have him. He too is also a student at Grand Rapids Community College and will be interning in executive office through the end of November and has already done amazing things in helping us with solutions in our office. So we appreciate his work as well.
It's so nice having them with us. And then Deputy City Attorney, do you want to introduce your interns?
Thank you. We had four interns in our office. Three of them are joining us today, I believe. They're Jordan Orr and Gabrielle Precop. If you could stand in the back. And is Christian Colehand here yet? He was going to come up as well. Jordan Orr is also a previous member of the Mayor's Youth Council, and he's attending University of Michigan, has been focused on community organizing over the summer, and has been really helpful in our municipal affairs division. So he's spending his last week with us this week and returning to Ann Arbor. And he's been working a part-time job in the community, but also interning with us and learning the ropes. Gabrielle is finishing her degree at Grand Valley State University, has been embedded in our enforcement division, has been gaining credit to finish her degree, and will be making some decisions about entering the legal field and career opportunities. And then Christian may join us as well. He's a law student at Michigan State University and has been very helpful in our litigation division. So, thank you.
I know, sorry, sorry. It's great having you all here. I know, I am a Spartan, so I like you them, but, you know. Okay, so Commissioners, let's get started. We have a number of action items before us, as I said before we get to the briefings. The first one is a resolution approving a ten-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000. And this is for the project located at 644 Bridge Street.
So moved.
All right, moved and supported. Mr. Gracia, you want to tell us about this? We did have a public hearing. I think we're all pretty familiar with this project as well as the other ones on our agenda today.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager. So this is a project at 644 Bridge Street Northwest, and it's a two-story existing vacant structure, about 3,600 square feet, that essentially will be rehabilitated for a future tenant. And total investments, just about $575,000. This exemption obviously will help with those improvements. And the project also receives support from the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority to help with the facade improvements.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a revised brownfield plan amendment for 900 Caesar E. Chavez redevelopment project. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported again. Commissioners, I know we are familiar with this project. It's been in the works for a couple of years now, and we did have a public hearing for it at our last meeting. Mr. Gracia, anything to add on this?
Nothing new, just, you know, again, this is important for a minority-owned developer to do some investments specifically on Grandville Corridor. And so this would be a part of his corporate headquarters and also potentially for Super Macalo Mexico as well.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great project. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next will take us to a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment for the Academy Manor project at 43 Lakeside Drive Northeast.
Moved.
All right, moved and supported by our second ward Commissioners. Mr. Gracia, anything to add on this?
Nope, just 108 rental units and most of them being on the affordable side, which is important to meeting our affordable housing needs in the city.
Yeah, thanks. An important site in our city. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment for Dwelling Place Regional Community Land Trust project, and this is located at 2080 Union Avenue Southeast. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. And Mr. Gracia, you want to tell us about this item?
Yep, so this project will result in 42 homes to be constructed to part of the Dwelling Place Community Land Trust project. And again, it's important to meet our affordable housing needs of the city.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'll add an emphasis to that, saying that what's exciting about this project is that these are owner-occupied homes that will be affordable, which has been a priority of this body for a long time. And trying to figure that out in today's market is a difficult task. So I appreciate all the work as well as the work by Dwelling Place to move forward this community land trust project. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor. Commissioner Rappert, did you want to say anything?
I'm just thankful that that project is moving forward.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a First Amendment to Brownfield revolving loan fund loan agreement and restated promissory note, and this is with Diamond Place LLC. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Mr. Gracia, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, so this is simply an amendment for that revolving fund loan payment to fund, a note, sorry, to delay the payment or restart, but also shorten the payment terms. So the original amount was $550,000 loan to the developer, and they're refinancing after they have completed construction and resulted in 162 residential units and 21,000 square feet of retail space. And so this is just a cleanup item, so as they refinance, it'll assist with their timing of payments and et cetera.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Commissioners, I forgot to tell you that we also have executive session today after COW. So I would like to call the question for executive session before we go to the briefings, and that way we don't have to do it afterwards. So these are, we have a couple of executive sessions all on legal opinions. So can I get a motion to go into executive session directly after our two briefings?
Moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. This is a voice vote, so I'll start down here. Commissioner Sessi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you all. All right, so we'll do that down in the law library? Okay. All right, so with that, we'll move to our updates and briefings today, and I believe I'll start by turning this over to our city manager to tee us up for this.
Thank you, Mayor. We're pleased today to have with us Police Chief Winstrom and members of his department today as they begin to review the plans and progress of the Grand Rapids Police Department. One of the reasons we hired Chief Winstrom after going through a national process was because of his expertise in working in another large department and his ability to help us continue to improve how we police and police with community. And I asked Chief Winstrom upon hire to begin, as he begins learning the department and the community, to share his early observations. And we intended for that to occur shortly after his arrival. But as you know, we have been very busy in our community with the officer-involved shooting as well as other issues around the increase in crime. And so during the budget presentation on May the 10th, as if you recall, when the Police Department presented their budget, I signaled at that time that Chief Winstrom would come back to the Committee of the Whole some 60-plus days later and provide his observations, his evaluation, and plans for the Police Department. And we're pleased to have him do that today. And while there was a recent announcement yesterday from the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, I want you to know that, as you know, that this review by the chief was pre-planned and not in response to the recent announcement. We had actually discussed this type of review as a condition of his hiring coming in. So it is with that, I'd like to ask Chief Winstrom to come now to the podium and share his presentation.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager and City Commission, for the opportunity to share my observations about public safety in our community and my plans for moving the department forward. Now, I was hired to bring positive change to the Grand Rapids Police Department, and I'm going to talk about several areas of change today, including policy and procedures, training, deployment of resources, and our role in the community. Our community did suffer serious trauma from 2020 through the pandemic and April 4th killing of Patrick Loyola, and I know we have a lot of healing to do. What I'm trying to do is translate what the community thinks and feels into better policing. Change will start in the short term with the steps I'm identifying today and the long term as well as we revise our strategic plan. As you are aware, Grand Rapids has engaged with outside consultants, many outside the department in the past few years, committees, consultants. While I review these, I think each provide insight. I too bring an outsider's perspective. And I've also had the opportunity to stay here now within the department and get firsthand perspective for over four months. What I committed to do the last time I appeared before this committee, Commission, and what I've done is review policies, training, equipment, deployment of resources, the strategic plan, and the role of the Chief of Staff. I intentionally set out to hear from as many people as I could in my engagement plan. I meet with my advisory team weekly, bi-weekly, I should say, have continued conversations with various secular and faith-based groups. I'm committed to working with OPA to get community involved in training, get feedback from the community through surveys, getting insight from those inside the department by working with and listening to them. But there will always be more engagement to follow. I experienced over 100 meetings with community members and met thousands of people. I've done more than just listen, spent many hours at question-and-answer sessions, having many very honest and sometimes uncomfortable conversations, which I found very informative. I pride myself on not turning down invitations to community events, even taking a last-minute call from a ninth-grade Grand Rapids public school teacher who wanted me to participate in a class presentation that her students were giving on police brutality. And I stood there for about 90 minutes and answered questions from a very engaged group of ninth graders. My observation is that people want good police service. I've heard the term "overpoliced" and "underprotected." Overwhelmingly, residents and businesses have told me mutual respect is critical to our success, and they absolutely want to see more police officers. They want those officers focused on important things: safety and making people feel safe. Our department has an excellent training culture, meaning we can successfully move the department forward with any changes we make now or in the future. In the past, some in policing have seen constitutional safeguards, such as the First Amendment's protections of free speech, the Fourth Amendment's protections regarding search and seizure and use of force, and the Fifth Amendment's protections regarding custodial statements as impediments to police work. To the contrary, proper constitutional policing is the key to trust and safety in our profession. Our department is a strong foundation, and numerous 21st century policing reforms were implemented before my arrival, including body-worn cameras, a ban on chokeholds, the requirement of members to intervene when they observe another officer using excessive force, and a prohibition on no-knock warrants. And speaking of a strong foundation, I even inherited an amazing group of people, some of whom are in leadership with me here today in the front row, including Sergeant John Mikowski, who piloted and now heads our homeless outreach team. Is our individual who is pushing forward our crisis intervention training and has recently taken charge of piloting our co-response model. Lieutenant Jane O'Forner, who started in her role as head of internal affairs just before I started, and holds this department to exceptionally high standards in such a professional way. I'm extremely lucky that she was put in that position literally just weeks before I started. We have our head of community engagement and recruiting, Lieutenant Maureen O'Brien, who is an absolute rock star as far as getting out there and really showing potential recruits what a great career that this can be, and continuously finding new ways to engage with the community. Captain Terry Dixon is our e-service captain. He's going to be talking a little bit about our DICE program later today. Let me just tell you a little bit about the captain's character. When one of our officers was charged with murder recently, we went to morning roll calls to break the news that that was going to happen. Obviously, an emotional thing for the officers to wrap their heads around. And we realized while the leadership was standing in that roll call that we had one odd officer, meaning there was an officer that would ride alone that day. Captain Dixon got in the patrol car and worked 12 hours on the street with that police officer, just like he was a brand-new officer himself, without blinking an eye the entire shift. Lieutenant Dave Seiver is here. I mentioned the excellent training culture. It's because of him that we have this training culture. He has created a training cadence that allows any changes that we bring forward to seamlessly be put in place so that our officers, on a schedule, can obtain that training quickly and efficiently and continuously. So as we make changes, and reform is a journey, not a destination, as we make positive changes in the Police Department, he has put a system in place to make sure that our officers can be properly trained in that system. Captain Joe Trigg will be talking about the DICE service area, the DICE program in the South Service Area, which he's captain. Captain Trigg started just a week before I did in his role in a new part of the city, which he wasn't that familiar with. It's interesting, because I show up at community events on a regular basis as I'm trying to learn the city, and I always see Captain Trigg there. In fact, just recently, in the East Town neighborhood, at South Town Church, I heard that there was an event on a Saturday, and I knew that Captain Trigg was on vacation. He was actually supposed to be out of town. And I showed up myself, and here Captain Trigg is in his regular clothes, off-duty, just because he's trying to make connections with the community. And of course, Deputy Chief Kristen Rogers is here, who was here with the beginning for me from, as I'm trying to find out where to park, how to obtain an ID, all the way through really understanding the history and the inner workings of the Police Department, and she has been instrumental in moving us forward. We are not immune from the same increases in crime that many communities are seeing across the country, and recognize that creating a safe community is not just the Police Department's job. Everyone plays a role. Our partnership with OPA is critical to our success, as is our connection to the city's strategic plan. I've heard from the community that they want honest police. They want police that are good at their jobs, that will be heroes when needed, that have compassion, that will listen, and will treat everyone equally. I want to be clear on one other observation: we cannot lose officers. We need the current funding to reach the staffing and services we need for the city. Here's the plan: we are revising policies to ensure constitutional policing, nationwide best practices, and we are going to have excellent training and training processes to implement these practices. Policy impacts day-to-day action and practice, but policy language can also help change the culture of an organization. We previously had a policy simply called "use of force." By changing the name and the purpose to put "use of force" last and "de-escalation" first, we're really highlighting the goal, which is of obtaining a peaceful resolution to every encounter. That doesn't mean that will always happen, because the reality is sometimes officers must use force to do their job for the people of the city, but this is an important change. Other language we are adding is a sanctity-of-life policy. Many officers would tell you the preservation of human life is their number-one job, but see it in black and white on paper, that no matter who a person is, their life is precious, and the preservation of that life is our priority as an important step for an organization. We are adding an explicit requirement and definition of de-escalation. De-escalation is what effective police officers have used for years to reduce the intensity of an encounter with such techniques as trauma-informed communication, acknowledging mistrust, tactical positioning, and using time as a tactic. Even veteran officers who have been working before this term was coined would agree, this is the right formula for navigating intense encounters. We're making additional policy language changes, some brought to my attention through OPA, which conveyed concerns from a group called Campaign Zero, which is very active in advocacy for police policy. We're adding the requirement of a warning before deadly force, the explicit requirement that force was necessary, and requiring de-escalation and the opportunity to comply. Training to our new policies is scheduled to begin August 2nd. The trainers will participate in ride-alongs to better understand the functioning and culture of the city and the department, and they have graciously agreed to meet with community stakeholders prior to the training for discussions on what our officers will be learning. The topics include self-regulation, de-escalation, and the understanding and value of acknowledging historical racism in American policing. We look forward to OPA's community-informed training as well. I want to clarify something about de-escalation training that we all heard at the last commission, and that is that, quote, "four hours of de-escalation training," or "two hours," whatever was said is not enough. And that's true. It's a true statement, but it misunderstands how police training works. The best training is in tactics, is not classroom training, it's scenario-based training. The training our team is getting includes "train the trainer," de-escalation, and licensing for all materials, so that this is not a one-off training. It allows our department to incorporate the de-escalation skills learned into the numerous scenario-based training we do on different topics throughout the year. Staffing to full complement is critical. Having 305 officers to support our efforts is important to our success, and opportunities for increased efficiencies through civilianization remain. We are leaning heavily on our special response team to supplement patrol, assist with community concerns, as well as continue to provide specialized emergency services. Their duties last week ranged from conducting community surveys to successfully executing a high-risk search warrant. We will continue to maintain our homeless outreach team, continue our presence in the Boys and Girls Club, and are excited for our new co-response model, which pairs a sworn police officer with a social worker to respond to individuals who could benefit from this dual response. I've included a link on this PowerPoint to a webinar from Network 180 talking about the program at the 30-minute mark. The team started on July 5th and has already responded to over 78 assignments, resulting in 25 diversions to appropriate level care. I spoke to the officer and social worker after their first day, and they shared with me a very early success story we hope to see regularly. 911 was called for a woman trespassing in a parking structure. She was subject to arrest for trespassing, but she was suffering from a mental health crisis. The team identified her doctor, was able to get her admitted to treatment, and learned that she was under a doctor's care regularly. Her prescription drugs had run out, and she had missed numerous doctor's appointments. What could have happened in the past is the woman could have been placed into custody, taken to county jail for processing for trespassing, where she'd be released, likely returned to that parking structure or somewhere else, generate another 911 call, and have that process repeat over and over. Instead, we had an outcome where a woman who needed medical treatment received it, and untold 911 calls were avoided. We continue to work on our efficiency, having recently empowered supervisors to administratively close calls which should not require a police response, and empowering officers to write abbreviated reports where appropriate. I'm looking forward to strengthening the Freedom of Information Act unit, and will propose adding a domestic violence victim advocate to our victim advocate services. Looking at crime in the city right now, you can see an increase in homicides since 2021, but fortunately not to the levels we saw in 2020. Other crime through June you could see is an increase over the years, but I want to comment that our detectives continue to focus on bringing victims of violence justice. Our enforcement efforts aren't focused on taking illegal guns off the street. Aggravated assaults and auto thefts have ridden steadily over the past two years, with Kias and Hyundai's accounting for a very large amount of thefts in the past few months. Our detectives are doing an excellent job with all crime and doing an incredible job of bringing violent criminals to justice. Officers on the street are doing an exceptional job as well, recovering, on average, 1.5 illegally possessed firearms every day. We've made, on average, this month, at least one arrest a day for possessing a stolen motor vehicle, and these numbers prove our officers are fully engaged and focused on reducing violence. Just this past Saturday, we had a stolen vehicle ram one of our police cars. Four occupants were arrested, and they were in possession of two illegally possessed handguns. These are the kind of offenders we need held accountable for their actions, preferably before they are able to use those firearms. Crime data is very valuable to determine resource allocations. At our first data meeting, we put up a so-called heat map indicating the concentration of violent crime in the city. The police leaders in the meeting with me all said that they could have correctly guessed the hotspots because they have been the same for years. You see the designations around Eastern and Martin Luther King Street and in the Burton Heights neighborhood. Those areas, along with Hartside Park, are the current focus of our DICE program. Our DICE, or Data-Informed Community Engagement, is based on the idea of identifying areas that could benefit from additional resources, engaging with residents and other stakeholders about the issues we see, and working together for improvement. The service area captains spearhead DICE and create service referral tracking numbers to monitor activity. Not only do the captains connect directly with the stakeholders, but DICE gives them the opportunity to create more community engagement opportunities for the sergeants and police officers assigned to the areas. The Hartside Park program is not generated by violent crime data. In fact, although there have been several highly-publicized incidents of violence downtown, the area hasn't seen the same level of violence as other neighborhoods. But GRPD heard appeals directly from the community around Hartside Park that residents there saw an active drug trade, bringing other criminal activity, including violence, and a general feeling of being unsafe. As I've said publicly many times, I do not think arresting those addicted to drugs is the most beneficial approach for either the community or the arrestee, but enforcing the law against people profiting from the illegal sale of drugs is appropriate and effective. We begun the enforcement portion of this operation this morning at 10:00 a.m. As I speak, we are moving to arrest 10 drug dealers who have been in this neighborhood, each of which we have already obtained warrants for. I anticipate seeing an immediate drop in criminal activity, and we want to send the message to the drug dealers that plaguing our neighborhood, that Grand Rapids isn't going to put up with you profiting from destroying people's lives. We have also contacted our local missions, downtown service providers, and Harm Reduction Organization RED Project to mitigate the potential impact, this disruption of the drug supply, on those with dependencies. I'm going to ask the e-serviced area captain, Captain Terry Dixon, to come up for a brief update on his DICE operation, which is getting underway.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, and City Manager. So after the data was presented and the crime stats were made available to the service area captains, we then had to design and figure out the exact location and the boundaries for the data-informed community engagement operation. That operation would first begin with consulting, advising, contacting the community at large. We began to do that with meetings with the neighborhood associations, the business associations in that particular area, and we also conducted foot patrols in that area, contacting or at least knocking on over 543 residents in the designed area within Burton Heights. Specifically, on the map, as you can see it, Quigley to the north, that first part down to Cutler, Buchanan, and Division. And we had noticed that a lot of the crime was somewhat originating in that particular area and then spreading south on Division all the way down to 28th Street, with certain activities such as drug activity, whether that's dealing or using, and also prostitution. So our efforts to enforce or begin to combat that began with community engagement and then meeting with all the meeting with all the groups, some residents, and then on Saturday, we moved into the area of our first enforcement activity in that particular area, which due to inclement weather kind of put a damper on the, that particular operation, and it did not really, it resulted in two traffic stops, one attempted traffic stop of a vehicle, a Kia, that fled from us, and also we assisted patrol with three calls for service before I ended up canceling that operation due to the weather. But moving forward, we will, and I will do have plans of additional operations as well as continued community engagement, foot patrols, and meeting with residents in that particular Garfield Park area. Specifically, my next contact will be on August 2nd, where I will attend the Garfield Park Neighborhood Association's event for National Night Out. So that will continue as well. This particular program will be, will conduct, will be moving forward for the next three months. During that entire three-month period, I will be consistently evaluating and tweaking as we move forward in order to bring crime down in that particular area and make the area more safe for everyone.
Thank you, Captain Dixon. I'm going to ask Captain Trigg to come up to discuss his, beginning his efforts in the area around Eastern Martin Luther King.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Good morning. I will, I'll save you from the redundancy of the program. Obviously, Captain Dixon explained kind of the details of what, what's going on. Obviously, my boundaries are different, as you see on the board there, so we're going to be working in those boundaries there. I think he explained the steps. The first step was the community engagement portion, which I met with at least 70% of my neighborhood organizations and kind of laid out the program, asked for their feedback on it, and actually scheduled a second meeting too, which is going to happen on the 11th of August, so we can bring more residents in. Obviously, this was kind of on something we got going quickly, but we want to get the community buy-in, we want to be able to present what this program is about and get their feedback going forward. I think as the chief mentioned earlier, with the South End here, our, our trouble spots have not changed. We know what they are. I think the only difference that I want to bring to it is the engagement portion. We, we talk about the engagement and engagement activities, but we need the engagement to make the residents in the, in the neighborhood realize that we want the same things, and that's what I want to drive home, that we both want a safe neighborhood, they want to live in a safe neighborhood, and not just talk about it, but actually be about it, drive it home. And that starts with building the engagement to get people wanting to have those contacts with us to help clean up the neighborhood and those type of things. So, like, the steps, getting that message out to the organizations, I'm sorry, the neighborhood organizations, the follow-up means we have the National Night Out that Captain Dixon referred to on April 2nd. I have three in the South End. There's some issues with time, but I'm going to try to get to, to all of them, because I think the engagement starts with me. I want to be that part, so, and bring the officers along on the path, but I want to be that initial icebreaker, even though we're in challenging times with, with the shooting in April, that kind of stalled some things. But I know from being out there overwhelmingly, I see the community engage in me and wave at me, and I think they want it, they're yearning for it, and that's what we're going to bring. And this program is going to help us identify specifically, you know, where the crime is so we can kind of exhaust our efforts there and, and see that the, the data, the information brought us to that area, and we're not just targeting a certain, certain group. So I believe that covers the most part. Same thing as, as Captain Dixon mentioned, we're going to take the data that we get over a period of time, evaluate, and then kind of move forward, see what steps we need to take from, from there. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Trigg. Can't do it alone. Whether it's our partners at Network 180, the Grand Rapids Fire Department, Private Security, Parks, Cure Violence, the Downtown Development Authority, other city agencies, we all have a role to play in public safety. We've seen the positive impact surveillance can have on deterrence and addressing crime condition. It's important to ask in government who else can help. We'll continue to collaborate with OPA on training and accountability to assist Cure Violence in their efforts. Our IT team recently changed the way we collect data to bring crime down to the 100-block level for better analysis of the results of Cure Violence activities at their request. And for the first time, they also made a modification to our system to record shooting incidents, which is a valuable data point. I want to share with you, I wanted to share with you an example of the outstanding efforts of our officers recently, and I didn't have to go back far. This is from July 20th. This was an arrest made by our SRT team in conjunction with our detectives and our vice. And what this is, this is the vehicle that the offender, who is wanted on six warrants, was arrested in. What you see there is something in a cup holder, it's a Glock 40, and you see something on the ground that almost looks like a child's toy, perhaps a Nerf gun or something. When you look closer, that on the left is a fully automatic, fully automatic AR-15. That is a machine gun. That has a 40-round magazine. Those bullets, 556, will go straight through the front and back of my bulletproof vest like it wasn't there. On the right, what you see in the cup holder is a Glock 40 semi-automatic gun, highlighted with a red circle is what's called a Glock switch. There's a 22-round magazine, meaning that gun has 23 40-caliber rounds in it. With that Glock switch, it has turned it into a fully-automatic handheld machine gun that is in his cup holder. You can empty all 23 of those 40-caliber rounds in under two seconds. That was an arrest that was made without any force being used. This is the sort of arrest that our officers are making on a regular basis, and I think we really need to acknowledge the excellent work they're doing. Remaining engaged when we take these, especially these machine guns, off the street before violent offenders can use them, that's exceptional work. The plan for GRPD is to implement policy changes, train to those policies, and work with OPA on community-informed training this fiscal year, which can inform the evolution of public safety. The plan is to accelerate collaboration with other city departments and strengthen our connection to the community with our involvement in the Safe Task Force. Cure Violence, Grand Rapids Justice and Governance Partnership consider expansion of the co-response model and regularly report to the Public, Public Safety Committee and the Commission on our progress. Our update to the strategic plan begins today and will mold our approach for the coming years. Our success will be measured in community sentiment, crime data, feedback, training progress, co-response outcomes, and staffing and deployment progress. We recently authorized 10 academy recruits. We have nine currently in the academy and are actively seeking lateral transfers to fill vacancies, with three already in the process. We're also sitting down with promising software vendors to maximize our efficiency during the recruiting process. I want to thank everyone in this city who's been willing to engage with me on making GRPD the best it can be. We need the city's support to be successful together. I've just been reviewing body worn camera footage of officers who rushed into a chaotic shooting situation recently and saved the life of a young man, carrying him to safety as shots still rang out when rushing him to the hospital while providing first aid. You have police, you have a police department filled with men and women willing to run toward gunfire for the people in the city. I'm very fortunate to work with this group of real heroes, and I'm thankful every day I've been given the great honor of leading them. Thanks for your time. I'm happy to take questions.
Mayor, if I could, before, questions from the commission?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Commander. Thank you, Chief, and your entire team.
I do want to thank the chief for his work in the leadership of the department for their work, as well as all the officers in the police department in this very difficult moment for our city, where we are under constant scrutiny for not only current actions but past actions. We still have to find a way to balance the desires of the community and the desire not to be overpoliced and to have reform, but also have effective policing, because we still have a criminal element in our city that we have to address to make sure that people are safe and feel safe at all times. And this has been very difficult to keep a department motivated, to continue to serve the public, and I am hoping with the chief's commitment, as you've heard today, that this begins along with some of the other efforts that are happening outside of the police department, an opportunity for us to begin moving forward in addressing both current and past issues. And so I do want to echo what the chief recently shared about the performance of the department in light of all of the difficulties. I did get debriefed by the chief on the critical incident and saw firsthand from the evidence that the officer was in a very active shooting environment. There was an active shooter, and there was someone who was critically injured, and instead of waiting for the ambulance services to arrive, which would have probably taken more time, because as the chief has indicated, they would not enter into that kind of acting and shooting environment unless it's safe, the officer provided transport services to the injured victim, put them in the back of their vehicle, and rushed them to the hospital to ensure they received the appropriate medical services and treated them on the spot. And, and that is the kind of brave, compassionate, and equitable policing, because the person that was doing the transporting, the victim was a person of color, different from the officer. That, that's what we expect. Obviously, the preference is to prevent that kind of criminal activity occurring, but we want a police department that can both prevent and respond to those incidents. And so I want to thank the chief for reinforcing that kind of culture and emphasize again that it's not going to be an effort that the Grand Rapids Police Department can perform solely. It's going to take community. You'll hear later from our partners from the Urban League and Cure Violence about their contributions, but we have other city departments who also play a very vital role in crime prevention, such as our Parks and Community, our Parks Department and our Community Development Department, and we will be more deliberately talking about the holistic approach of all our governmental services in addressing some of these issues along with community partners and residents to make sure we have better outcomes. So I want to thank again the chief for his work since arrival and certainly the presentation today.
Thanks. Thanks, City Manager. All right. I think Commissioner O'Connor is, are you telling me you want to?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for the presentation. So I continue to hear you say, and I guess we've touched on this a bit during public safety meetings in the past, is you're authorized strength of 305 officers and a desire to have that 305 as a continued number to provide, you know, great quality policing services in Grand Rapids, and knowing the current staffing level of 270-ish, how do we get there? I know that's still my biggest, my biggest concern with everything is, you know, I want the best and the brightest and the most talented people in, that you can, you can bring to Grand Rapids to be our, our men and women in blue uniforms, but, you know, we're 40 short, and I think, you know, I'm fearful that the attrition rate of people retiring is going to, is, you know, it's going to be really hard to get to 305, so I want you to tell me how you're going to get there, sir.
Well, there's two answers. I have two answers. Number one is we're doing everything we can as far as recruiting. My lieutenant charge of recruiting is here, and she's a rock star in our organization. We have been looking, actually brought her up to the city manager, new software that, that some other agencies around the area have been using and finding some success with, that we have a meeting with that company to see if we can bring that in as far as reaching out to even more people. We're taking every step we can as far as taking trips out. We have trips planned to historically black colleges and universities. We have pop-up events at, anytime there's an event that we can put a recruiting table at, we'll put the recruiting table at, reaching out as much as we can. So we're doing everything, but that gets me to, the second answer to that question is making her job more easy is letting it be known that this city supports its police department. That's, you know, the last slide is, is the last paragraph on this slide said, like, I'm really kind of a, you know, a plea to say, I hope the city starts to recognize, or in fact, in, in public, I've gotten a ton of feedback that the city does recognize, that they embrace the police, they see the need for the police, they support the police, they want the police out there. And so if we can get to that point where we're moving forward, it's been tough since April 4th. I think it gets easier as we go on. When potential recruits see that Grand Rapids police officers are appreciated in their city, it's going to make the lieutenant's job and my job of getting those potential recruits in a lot easier. Because to be honest, if, if a police department's not on the news, if they're not under scrutiny at all times, it's a little bit easier job for, for a police officer. If you're working in a more rural environment where there's not always a call backlog, where you're not rushing in to save shooting victims in an active shooting situation, that's a little bit easier of a job. So when you have those two to choose from, you really need a heart of service to come work in Grand Rapids, and fortunately, we're, we're getting those individuals. We need more of them, but I think as we get more support from the city, we'll get there.
Thanks, Chief. I'll go to Commissioner Rappert and then Commissioner Moody.
Great. Thank you, Chief. So there's a lot to unpack there, a lot, a lot, a lot to respond to. I made a lot of notes here, but first, I just want to say thanks for listening. 100 meetings, I know you love coffee, but 100 meetings is a lot, and I thank you for the two, two-cupper that we had together. And I love this concept of we all have a role to play in public safety, and thank you for your action in Hart Side. So that's a perfect example of, of a holistic approach, because the residents, we walked around, they saw some trees that needed to be trimmed, some trashcans that they needed, some lighting that they want adjusted, and then they had a very specific ask for the police department, and you delivered on that, so I'm so thankful for that. I'm hopeful that that can happen again. I got to hear Captain Dixon talk about DICE in the Burton Heights Business Association meeting, and I know that they really appreciate that outreach, and I think the thing that's intriguing to me about DICE is that door-to-door work. I think that that's going to be really interesting to see what that yields, and so I, those are two neighborhoods in the First Ward that are on the heat map, and so I just want to say thanks for your, your action and swift action in both of those neighborhoods. The things that I'm, well, in particular, and I just appreciate your sensitivity to people using drugs, right? It's the dealers that we want to get, so I just appreciate your sensitivity to that. I, I'm thankful for the update on co-response, you know, and just in several weeks, right? That's already some great initial success. I affirm the training culture that you talked about within your department. I've noticed in the last four and a half years that the training of GRPD is exceptional, and I think that this Train the Trainer formula, because we talked about that de-escalation training in LA that you wanted to bring, and it's expensive, but if we could do that Train to Trainer, it helps to spread it out, and so I thank you for that as well. There's, there's a lot of other things in here that I, that I appreciate, the emphasis on de-escalation. You know, I'm really into neuroscience and trauma, so I think that that's a conversation that I think that is really important to kind of continue to invigorate within the department. A domestic violence victim advocate, an emphasis on the sanctity of life, all of those things are things that I just want to affirm, but I think that the thing that I appreciate this morning is the stories that you shared, and I think that when we have an opportunity to reflect on public safety through actual stories that happen in actual neighborhoods and in people's lives, both for the officers that are involved in it, as well as the community and how, how they respond to it, it just really helps, I think, for the healing to take place is to root it in actual things that happen. And so thanks for sharing those stories, and thanks for all of this work. It's a lot of meetings. I know that we're, in some ways, we're rebooting all over again, but I'm really encouraged by the things that you're mentioning here and the things that you're, that you're looking to, to work on with your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chief, for this report. I like the word courage here, rebooting, but I would prefer reset. I would like to thank you for the work that you're doing, but most I would like to thank those men and women who are sitting right behind you, who've been in Grand Rapids for some time and have done a lot of work in this city. I know they don't get the credit that they truly deserve because of the fact that there's a hostile environment throughout the country. But what I do want to say, and if Captain Trigg could answer this question for me, a lot of our violence are taking place within the Third Ward, which is Commissioner Lerneas and I Ward. What I would like to do, if possible, with you, if it's available, to sit down and talk with you before some of the meetings that you have, so that we can figure out ways that we can support you and be on the same page.
Absolutely. Like I said, I'm, I'm big into the engagement portion, and obviously if...
And obviously, if, so having those sit downs with you too, because I know you, obviously you have that footprint in the community. So the more details, the more engagements I can have to be that voice for my troops going in and know what exactly what the community wants and what you guys want to see, absolutely.
I think that'd be very appropriate. The other thing, too, is that, Chief, and your entire command staff, I'm a Grand Rapidian, and I say this all the time. We need to start at home with looking for our recruits. We always go all over across the country bringing in people. But what about transforming the mindset of individuals within the city to gain new police officers? You've got a great program here. You're getting ready to start some new things. That's why I call it reset. You're resetting the process. But we got to start at home, too. Because the best way to build your city is to make sure you've got people on your staff that understand how the city operates. I think we are missing an opportunity of getting back into those high schools, middle schools, and start looking for individuals that we can train. I don't know what your policy is on that, but we need to get back into our high schools within our inner cities to bring a new form of thinking for our department.
Commissioner, so we share your thinking that homegrown talent is the way to go. That's why we have our athletic programs. We've done some youth baseball this summer. We just graduated Youth Police Academy with all Grand Rapids residents, teenagers earlier. We have our Explorer Program. We want those opportunities. We've also reached out. Deputy Chief Rogers has been working with Grand Rapids Public Schools to try and get back in those schools. So we want to build those relationships early so that when they hit the age to be a police officer, they consider us. We've also sat down with the new director at GRCC's academy, which tends to have more Grand Rapids residents in it, and talked with him about ways that, things that we can do to get more of those recruits, including one of the changes we made recently is one of our officers is going in to be an instructor there now, so that we have a physical presence there, so he can be there not only teaching the recruits, but advocating for our department.
And last question, being a part of Grand Rapids, being a Grand Rapidian, I care about the city. This is my city. I get a little bit upset when people are talking about my city, because I know that this city is great. I do know that we've got some problems that we do have to fix, and it does take us all to do that. And now is the time to do it. Because if we don't, then we're going to be having some dark days ahead of us, darkening what we've been dealing with. So I pledge myself to the city of Grand Rapids, to our Third Ward, to make sure that we are in compliance with what it is we want to do to make the transitions. As a funeral director, I buried a lot of those young men and women, some of them. And I'm tired of seeing them come before our business to see families hurt. And I hate to see police officers in the same position as well. It is important for us to figure out how we're going to move forward now to make sure that the whole city is able to get the public safety that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll make a couple of comments, and then I'll turn to some additional comments and questions from my colleagues. So first, Chief, I'm going to add my thanks to you for your leadership, especially during this challenging time. You really had to hit the ground running and didn't have a whole lot of time to settle in before you had to lead through a hard time. So thank you for that. And I'm going to add my thanks to the entire department that even during these challenging times, continue to get up every day and show up and respond to critical incidents in our city. And beyond that, as you indicated, work really hard to get out and increase engagement with our residents and our business owners and identify ways that we can move forward and create the changes that individuals in our community want to see. And it's a hard balance. And I appreciate you weighing both of those and also recognizing that as we try to create change, there's a lot of healing that has to happen. I appreciate you recognizing the history of racism in our country and especially in policing. And also recognizing and being able to clearly say, we can get through this and we can do better, and here is a roadmap. And we're committed, I'm committed, the department's committed, we're committed as a community to do that, but we all need to do it together. It doesn't just land on your shoulders, even though I know you feel a ton of weight on your shoulders. So thank you for that. I have a couple of concrete questions, and I don't know if you or any of the other captains want to speak to these, or maybe even DC Rogers. So I have three questions. I'll throw them out to you all at the same time. So one, I'm so glad to hear that July 5th, the co-response team started. So thank you for all your work in getting that off the ground. I'm curious if that is fully operational, if there's a phase-in approach? Are we hoping to kind of learn from it and then scale up? So if you can maybe add a little bit more on where we are and where we hope to be as that program rolls out? So that's one question. Second question, thank you for talking about the need for additional support for victim advocates. I think we've all heard that loud and clear. I know myself and others have been very concerned about not just the uptick in violence, but especially the increase in domestic assaults that we're seeing. And so I'm curious when we're hoping to add some support to that team, knowing that we need to, there's a lot more work to be done there. And I know I've talked to some of our community partners, and I've talked to the DC about that as well. And then my third question in response to the stolen vehicles, which I know all of us have heard concerns from our community about, and I appreciate all the work the department is doing, as well as all of our partners. I know the Sheriff's Department is actively engaged and our surrounding jurisdictions are engaged in this work. But I'm curious about the impact that challenges and other systems are having in our response to the increase in stolen vehicles. So I know that we still have a backlog in our court system. I know that, you know, the Sheriff's Department is short-staffed as well. There's challenges with staffing fully, our juvenile detention and jail. So I'm curious your thoughts on what we can do in partnership with community even to try to address this increase in not just stolen vehicles, but the violence that is happening when that occurs.
Well, I'll answer the last question first and then maybe get some backup from the first row here. And that's in reference to the Kias, the Hyundai's, the stolen vehicle problem. We have met with Prosecutor Becker and the state and the county, because as you said, there are other systems that were impacted really from COVID and with staffing issues. I would say majority, especially a majority of those stealing the Hyundai's and the Kias are juveniles. So working in that juvenile system, they have staffing issues, they don't have as many services available, they don't have, you know, there's multiple offenders that probably should be housed. They don't have the occupancy for state facilities or county facilities to house these kids. So the options of what to do with this group, which we know are responsible for a majority of the Honda and Kia thefts in the area, it's difficult. It's, you said, you know, what else can work? You know, a lot of people think that, you know, just appeal to the parents, where are the parents? But then you have, you know, a single parent working two jobs. And, you know, if, how are you supposed to keep track of a 15 and 16-year-old that's out there doing these things? So I see the challenge. There's no easy answer. The good thing is it's a problem regionally. So everybody in the county at least realizes that this is a problem. That's why we've been having these meetings together, trying to work for solutions. I don't have one now. As far as the enforcement goes, the police department, the detectives, and the forensic team are doing an excellent job identifying these kids who are stealing these vehicles. We can put handcuffs on them. But what happens after that, to come to a good resolution, is what we're really struggling with. So we're making the arrests. It's just that we're seeing a lot of recidivism. And so that's a system problem. And I wish I had a more concrete answer as to how to get it right moving forward. But the last meeting we had, I think there were about 25 of us in a room talking about it, and nobody had, you know, nobody had the magic answer. And hopefully, we'll improve as we move forward.
Thanks.
As far as more positive response, Johnny, are you comfortable talking about the?
Absolutely.
All right. This is Sergeant Wukowski.
Hi, Sergeant. Good to see you.
Good morning, everyone. To your question, Mayor, yes, we are planning on ramping up mobile crisis response. Currently, we're running it kind of as a pilot. We wanted to go slow to ensure that the service that we were providing was service of quality. Officer Smith and social worker Long are doing a fabulous job. And I think the most important thing to bring home with regards to this program is the saving in resources and the provision of quality care to some of our most vulnerable folks. When they're going to a call or when they're responding to a crisis, the social worker can get on her computer in time and figure out who this person is, the services they're getting, the medication they're on, and their case manager before they even get there, so they can start that dialogue with information already in hand. The team currently works seven to five, four days a week. They're extremely busy. Resources, obviously, the Grand Rapids Police Department, as you have heard, are lacking. We, however, hope to expand this program to have an afternoon shift and eventually an evening shift. So still working out some kinks. And I can't say enough about our community partner, Network 180. Kristen Spikerman, Kenny Garvin, the direct supervisor, have been amazing. So at this point, I am thrilled with the progress. And furthermore, in speaking about mobile crisis, we work also with HOT, or they work with HOT, as well as code enforcement, because all of those teams within special operations are related on one level or another. If you're talking about code response, you're talking about hoarding. If you're talking about homeless outreach, you're obviously dealing with individuals that are unhoused. All are about and are a part of crisis response.
And Sergeant, can I ask you a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So I know a lot of work has been going on in our community to create and build a crisis response stabilization unit. I know that's moving along. Are we hopeful that that's going to be in place within the next year and we'll be able to utilize those services as well?
Within a year is probably doubtful. It has moved further along, much further along than it has ever been. I've been here at the GRPD for 27 years. About 20 of those years, we've talked about some sort of stabilization center. The county is pretty much heading up this. They're doing an amazing job. Certainly, funding is a huge issue. Where it's going to go is probably going to be on the campus of St. Mary's. But this is a developing program, and certainly the evolution of what this is going to look like eventually is probably not been fully realized. But that's where we're heading. I think we're at a point of no return as far as it actually being implemented. Mayor and probably a few of others know of common ground on the other side of the state, sort of fashioning in that model. That will relieve a lot of pressure of our EDs and certainly our jails. So if we divert somebody, we can bring them to a location where they can get further stabilized. So.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
I just want to say, I think Officer Smith is a great appointment to that role. I think the world of him.
He's fantastic. Thanks. I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Rogers to come up and speak to the victim services aspect.
Hi, DC.
Sure. Hello. Yes, so coming from an investigator role myself for 17 years and working with victims and seeing the, how the, I guess, times have changed and staffing and resources and stuff, definitely the reduction of our domestic assault response team did hit hard home for us. We have an awesome internal victim advocate, Clarissa Novak. And so we've been working with her on actually creating additional positions within the police department. We'd like to move her to her supervisor role. Then we would create two victim advocates underneath her. Because what I think a lot of people don't realize is that staffing with police is just not on the road, but it's also in our investigations unit. It's within other areas within our police department. So really, any police report that gets created that has a victim assigned, unless that case gets charged, that's the only time that they actually get victim services through the court. Otherwise, all of the other people that we interact with, they do not get any type of victim advocacy. So really, we need the people internal to reach out and act as a conduit in between our road patrol and our detectives, and then the larger picture with like Safe Haven or the Y or other larger resources that are out there. So really, I mean, they contact all the police reports that either don't get assigned or that don't get charged, and we really, like I said, need that conduit. And that's probably, I mean, right now, we're looking at about 9,000 reports that we get in internal. And with staffing and other resources, I mean, we're struggling with about probably 5,000 that get assigned. So we really, there's several reports that need that attention.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Commissioner Lanier and then Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief and crew, for your presentations this morning. Wealth of information. I have a lot of hearts on my PowerPoint here, indicating the things that I really like to see and to hear that's happening in the department. And I would echo the comments of the mayor that I am grateful that you did have in your, a part of your presentation about the racism that existed in the history of policing, because I think that's an important message for the community to understand, the agency to understand, this body to understand, as we're making decisions, that's part of it and part of some of the concerns we've heard from the community. So thank you for doing that. I have a few questions. I always seem to be the last one, you know, towards the end, and then it's like, we've spent so much time, should I hold back on my questions?
Nope.
I always go back and forth in my head. So I do have a few questions.
I still have two more commissioners to go.
I know, yeah. And they're long-winded, too. So. So I'll just, I'll try and kind of go through them all, Chief. And you and your lieutenants and captains and officers and sergeants can jump in where you see fit. I'm still curious about the neighborhood policing model that was implemented and where things are with that. And your perspective on the strategic plan. The agency spent a lot of time developing it. So because it was recently developed, I'm just curious to know what modifications does some of what's in here make to that existing plan, or if you're planning to overhaul that plan? I am grateful for the activity of the social workers being teamed with a sworn officer. I'm curious to know if we are engaging them in, and I see victim services as not just domestic violence, but those who have been victimized in crime in different ways. So I want to make sure that that's a part of victim services, that we're, you know, addressing a plethora of victims. In addition to people who are witnessing crime happening in their neighborhoods, and then, you know, seeing a dead body and then going back in and eating dinner and going to school the next day. Like, there needs to be some level of trauma-informed services provided to community as a whole when those things transpire. So I'm just curious to hear about that. And with the victim support, you know, I'm also curious about perpetrator support, family support. So when a perpetrator commits a crime, their families are impacted by that in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, how do we help them to understand the system too, as they're navigating it for their loved one who has perpetrated a crime? Because households and families are impacted by that. Thank you, Captain Dixon, for your time. I've, you know, heard back from many of the businesses who are grateful for your engagement. Thank you for prioritizing that in the East Service Center. And to hear that you're knocking on doors and that your goal is to reduce crime throughout your service center. And thank you, Captain Trigg. I think Commissioner Moody said it well. You know, I too am interested in having dialogue to see how we can support, and that's the same for you as well, Captain Dixon. So thank you for your engagement. And I think that this engagement is an essential element to the recruitment question and conversation. Because when there is interest and there is trust that's built, the outcome of that will be, you know, the interest in policing as a profession. And, you know, I'll never forget taking my son at the time to a police banquet many years ago. And it was during a time when videos would be shown, and he left saying, I want to do that, I want to be an SRT. And that was in, since then, he has gone to that banquet and reminds me about it every single year. Now, he's changed career aspirations five times now. But the idea that he was exposed to something and made a decision about it is important. And so if he were to circle back to policing being of interest for him, then, you know, it's because relationships have been built every single time he's at the banquet. then, you know, it's because relationships have been built every single time he's at the banquet. And, you know, I'm appreciative of the data sharing that is occurring with the community. So neighborhood associations, as well as a partner like the Urban League and the Cure Violence. Thank you for showing the weapons that were retrieved and going in depth about kind of the nature of the weapons that are there. I think it's helpful for us, it's helpful for the public to understand the significance and severity of what's on the street. Excuse me. And, you know, so I'm curious, I think I had heard a number about how many weapons are being confiscated off the streets. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that. City manager, I'd like to kind of address comments that you made because I do think that looking at public safety holistically is the key in the answer. As the former chair of SAFE, that's exactly what the model requested. That's exactly what the model was created and designed and supported. When you look at the peace pillars, it crosses all different areas. So when we're talking about Grow 1000 and employment for young people, that's in there. When we're talking about having recreation and parks, that's in there. Data sharing, policy changes, all of that's in there. And having models like Cure Violence is also a part of that. And I just, and even some of the funding of the programs that's happening through SAFE, like parental engagement. So we had program providers saying, "We would provide these services, but they would leave and some of it would be undone because they're going home and hearing a different message." So they started having programs to bring parents into the changes that they're trying to help young people to see. And even funding domestic violence programs. All of these things, when you look at the peace pillars, is in there. Because what we know for sure and what we knew back in 2015 is that all of those things need to be in place simultaneously for you to see a reduction in violence or an increase in public safety. I'll kind of end with just a few more things. It was a delight to hear, and I think I have heard these conversations by having one-on-one conversations with members of the agency. But I think it's important for the community to hear it as well, that there is a priority for engagement. And I heard that from your captains, sergeant. I know Lieutenant O'Brien, who is a rock star. Thank you for calling her that. You know, she appreciates that. And I think that, you know, the DCs also are, you know, heavy on community engagement. And I'm happy that that exists right here in the Grand Rapids Police Department. And then I think I'll just mention that there are families, and I think you started talking about this, that are struggling right now. Two-parent households, single families, working, non, you name it. They're struggling with what to do with their children who are of age and independence, you know, where they can have access to things that the families don't want them to. And what I hear as an opportunity here for us as a city is that we need to create a place for those families to go, a number for those families to call, partnerships with organizations for them to provide services for them. Because sometimes they're fearful of calling, directly calling the department. And because they don't really want the outcome to be prison. But they know their family member needs help. And I see that as an opportunity. And I don't know where that should rest. And perhaps you know that now. But I just think we need to figure out a way to make that available so that even the young people who don't want to get in the game can figure out a way to prevent themselves from getting into the game. I'm saying game and not gang, right? Because the game is different than the gang. And they are trying to avoid some of this. And many of them are carrying these weapons, at least conversations I have had, because they fear for their lives, too. And so the solution, they think, is this. And we know that that isn't the solution. But if someone else is carrying the weapons, what should they do? And so I'd like to kind of hear a little bit about that. I thank you, Commissioner Isasi and the other co-chairs of SAFE for the gun buyback that's happening next week. Because I think that is a way to be able to say to families, "If you see it and you want to get rid of it, here's a safe place for you to be able to do that." So in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Can you repeat the question?
Chief, Commissioner Lanier had a lot in there. So maybe just highlight.
I have my questions now. Don't play. I have them.
This may require a one-on-one session with you, too.
A two-coffee meeting, probably. Commissioner, I tell you, so to address what you mentioned at the end, I really liked what you were saying and I agree with what you're saying. And kind of what I mentioned earlier is, you know, with this group of kids that are stealing cars, sometimes driving around with guns, committing other crimes. What I've heard from some people is, you know, "Where are the parents? We got to hold the parents accountable." And then you look into it and it's a single mom with a couple of kids, two jobs. And my mom is in that position. And she didn't know what my brother was doing. He ended up going to prison. You know, it's the same, like, it's not that easy. It's not an easy. But I think you're suggesting, I agree, that we can't do it alone, the police. There are more out there, whether it's Safe Task Force or, you know, we're working with Cure Violence. Deputy Chief Rogers and I had a meeting with an organization the other day who gave us these cards, is like, "Hey, give these to your police officers. Let them know that if they encounter a family that's in need of diapers, of some sort of thing, like, let them know we're out there." I'd never heard of this organization before. And now they're just like, there's, so there's resources out there. So educating our police officers on what those resources are, when it's the cops that are called to go to these things. But I know that there's people that don't want to call the police. And there's other things out here. Now, also, our police officers carry cards with them that, I think it has the 211 number, but it has a list of services available. So they are, they are a conduit to other services, other city services, that, you know, the police aren't always the answer for everything to get there. I know we can do a better job of that. So any help that we can get from everybody else in city government to, because I know we can play a big role. And it's usually the police that are out there at 4:00 AM in the morning and nobody else. So we can get there. Neighborhood policing program, it's still in effect. I think the DICE program enhances it. The problem being that we currently, I think, have 274 total officers. We don't have that as many as we need on the road and patrol, definitely. So to say that every beat is covered isn't there. But the DICE program does give the captains the opportunity, when they have these meetings, to bring the neighborhood officers in, to meet the community, to meet the stakeholders, meet the business owners, the residents, et cetera, to enhance that. It certainly would be easier to have more patrol officers to do that. And it would be more personal. Right now, there's just a bigger group that they're trying to meet. As far as victim services, you mentioned, we talked about the domestic violence. Our current victim services, it does, it's more than just domestic violence. It starts with homicide, unexpected death, they call it, whether that's a suicide, murder, or simply an unexpected death. They review those reports every day. They contact the families. Sometimes they go out actually on scenes, to homicide scenes in real time and go meet with the families, the impacted people. As far as services for others, you said, like offender services. Like, I know that there's an impact. You take a father out of a home and send him to prison, there's a big impact there. I don't know, I guess I'm not educated enough as to know what resources are available here. I know that we certainly could be a conduit for those resources. I don't know if the public defender's office, if there's others that are already doing that. But, I mean, it's, let's face it, it's real easy for a police officer involved in these things to hand a piece of paper to everybody on scene, say, "Okay, we're leaving. We're not the answer for everything. Here's this list of people that are more than willing to give you guidance, give you assistance, give you help." So that's something that we'd definitely be willing to do. The gun recovery level is astronomical for what we've been going through. To know that these officers are still engaged, on average, one and a half illegally possessed guns. That's someone who has a gun on them, who's either convicted felon, unable to do it. That, those images which I showed you of the two fully automatic weapons in the car, they then, our officers, our SRT team then did a search warrant on that individual's house. There were four more guns, one of them fully automatic, two of them ghost guns, which means they had zero serial numbers on them. So we have no idea where they came from. So obviously, we contacted the ATF and they're involved to take this offender to federal court as well. But to think that, on average, one and a half, 1.5 guns every single day, Grand Rapids cops are getting one or two guns off the street from people illegally possessing them. And you don't hear about, we don't have officer-involved shootings every day. And these are extremely dangerous encounters. But they know how important it is to get these guns before these guns are used. So that's all the jumbled notes I have. If there's one that you think I missed, but I'm, obviously, it can come back anytime.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Which I will just echo what you said, Chief, and which is why many of us have said for a long time we need more and more aggressive, common sense gun laws in this country. So, and then, Chief, your response made me think of something. We still have a volunteer victim advocate.
We do.
Train team, right? And they will share community resources. It's been a while since I've talked to them, but.
Correct. Yeah, we have a response team that goes to any unexplained death, even more than homicides. Right now, Clarissa is working with all crimes other than domestic assault. So that's what our proposal is for two additional advocates under her. So one would do all crimes non-family related. And our family service team hallway, which includes domestic assault, it would do any type of family crimes. Or any report that actually, like I said, is not even assigned to a detective. So needed resources, Arbor Circle Information, Wedgewood, I mean, anything like that. All the way to like SEPTED, like how to get somebody in contact with our housing code. I mean, it's just somebody that would know all the ins and outs, that can really have the time to talk to or meet with victims to say, "Hey, if you're struggling with a teen, or you're struggling with keeping the lights on, or you're struggling with," I mean, just anything. So that's where we feel like we are in a deficit right now with the ability to do, based on just the number of cases that are coming in, the investigators, and when things get assigned.
Sure. Great. Thanks, DC.
If I can just add something, too. I think another point that I heard through this is that we are solving crimes in our city. And so when you think about, you know, those who are pulling triggers or, you know, or carrying illegal weapons, you know, they're being, you know, sought after and the crime is being reduced. And I think that's another element that doesn't get talked about enough. So, you know, when you kill someone in the city of Grand Rapids, there are consequences to that. And I think that's another message that's important for families and young people to hear, that you don't just shoot and that's the end of it. This isn't a video game.
Absolutely. And we've had, unfortunately, 16 murders so far this year, made arrests in nine of them. The nine people going to prison on them. And I anticipate the other seven will get cleared as well. Excellent detectives here. This is not the place to mess around and commit a gun crime. We will find you.
Which is important for the family of the victim. All right, Commissioner Jones and then Commissioner Isasi.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for your presentation on this morning. I want to begin by acknowledging the presence of two realities, I think, in our community. And this is, I would say, well before, you mentioned in your presentation, the year 2020. I want to suggest that we have been sitting in and dealing with both tension and trauma probably well before 2020, both from the perspective of your officers, as well as those of us who sit on the dais, as well as those in community. And tension is defined as the state of being stretched tight. And I think that we, I think each of us has a story. Each of us, meaning those of us up here, our officers, as well as those in community, about the very real tension that exists in our community even today. And of course, how it was exacerbated on April 4 and beyond. And I also tend to believe that that tension leads to trauma. And that whether officers want to admit it or not, I think that officers have been traumatized. I think the community's been traumatized. I think we up here have been traumatized. And so we are in uncharted waters. And I just want to thank you for your continued leadership for such a time as this. I don't think there's anything that could have prepared you for your role here. I know that you've had significant experience with Chicago PD. But again, I think that what we're experiencing here is obviously very new to us in Grand Rapids. And I think it takes what you are presenting. I think it takes just that. I think it takes a mindset that is going beyond the norm. And I want to just encourage you and challenge you to try your best to engage or look into, or use a lens of innovation when it comes to public safety, thinking out of the box, and also a greater dependence on community partners. I tend to believe that when we talk about our sons and daughters in the community who are engaged in some of the mayhem and the chaos in our community, I don't believe that the answer is additional policing. I believe that it's a combination of things. Because we're talking about, I believe, a lot of it has to do with root cause. So these are elements that there's nothing an officer can do to address some of the historic inequities that have been, that have plagued our country, that have gotten us to the place that we are in terms of the outcomes and some of the behaviors of some of our community members with regards to possessing guns and, again, engaging in chaos and stealing cars and such. These are things that, again, I don't think any of your officers went, when they went to the academy, were trained on how to deal with root cause. And so I think a greater dependence on community partners is critical if we are to turn the corner and be a community that is deemed as safe and feels all the more safer. I think you mentioned that there was the proliferation of guns. I think one of the questions I have for you is, what do you think the role of GRPD is in addressing the proliferation of guns? Because I think we all know that they just didn't necessarily show up. But, and there are more and more illegal guns on the street. But what role do you think specifically PD plays in the proliferation? Because I get it. I don't think that any of you want to come in contact with anyone who has, who possesses an illegal firearm. Nor does, I think, nor do our neighbors in community want to be in a community in which folk are walking around and driving around with illegal guns. So we'd just love to hear from you on that first question about the role of PD.
Well, there are, obviously, in Michigan, the gun laws are fairly more relaxed compared to other states. So there's a lot of legally possessed guns. I believe Commissioner Lanier mentioned the gun buyback program. You know, we had a 13-year-old killed a couple of months ago from a gun that was just laying in a grandfather's house that I don't know if they even knew what was there, whatever. But it's those sort of opportunities to take those guns that at one point in time were legally possessed off the streets. I've mentioned the amount of illegally possessed guns by people that carry them, potentially because they intend to use them in some other crime. The officers are doing a fantastic job. And then you have the even more extreme, these literal machine guns that exist. And we're working with our partners in ATF because it's those sort of guns that end up either in mass killings, you know, school violence incidents and things like that. That, I should say, you know, the Glock that I showed you that literally can fire 24 bullets in under two seconds is impossible to aim. Even a trained marksman could not aim that gun after the first shot. So within two seconds, you have bullets literally sprayed all over. They could go into houses occupied by kids, et cetera. So getting those extreme guns off the street, I really do think that there is a role for law enforcement in getting those legal guns and letting people know, advertising to people that if you get caught with one of these guns, you will go to prison because it's extremely dangerous. This is how innocent kids get killed all the time by those sort of weapons. So we have, we do have a role, like you mentioned about root causes. I'll be the first to admit, the police aren't the answer to all of the issues regarding crime activity. And if that means that we can be a partner in some of those, in doing our part to assist in fixing some of those root causes, I'll be the first to say, "I'll stand next to somebody and nod my head, give support, whatever it is I can do to support the people that are really working hard for those root causes, we're all on board." But I'll be the first to admit. But I'll be the first to admit, we're not the complete answer. But I do think that there's an important role for, for law enforcement as well.
Thank you. Another question I have is you make mention of, part of your work since you've been here has been to take a good, hard look at the, the plethora of studies and plans that we have initiated, starting back with the 12-point plan in 2015. And in particular, I want to lift up the staffing analysis that came by way of the Hilliard Heinz study. And you make mention of your initial action, action plan to review and consider different deployment strategies for sworn staff. Again, recognizing that we're in a season right now where, I think you mentioned the number 274, but there's a budget for 305. I want to suggest that a lot of the, the, the issues regarding trying to successfully recruit potential officers has to do unfortunately with our current state. And, you know, I think part of the collateral damage and the unintended consequences of an officer-involved shooting. This is what I've seen in Minneapolis. I've seen this in Louisville, I've seen this in, in Chicago, I've seen this in St. Louis. And so this is nothing new in terms of the struggle for departments to recruit, to, to, to attract recruits for policing. But just again, some of your thoughts about the potential of looking, taking, taking an even harder look at the current staffing model and giving real consideration to what Hilliard Heinz suggested in 2019 in terms of their, their belief of how we can properly deploy our, our resources.
Yeah, I did look at that study when, when made some of the changes, including the civilianization, which is something that's under contract negotiation right now. So we're looking to take a few spots that we think could be civilianized from sworn police officers. So that would immediately give us a benefit of more officers on the road. The case management practices and let's see, civilian staff, alternate response strategies. That's kind of what I mentioned about, we're looking at two things. Number one, we're looking internally at the detective unit, the level of solvability of cases that come in. Because traditionally, every case has been assigned to a detective. Even if you read the case and you realize there's, you know, there's no witnesses, there's no evidence, there's nothing. We're never going to find this stolen lawn ornament or something like that. You know, it would still go to a detective. So I've asked the detective team to give me a list, a threshold that I can sign off on and say, we're going to reduce the administrative burden from the detectives. We're simply not going to sign these out, which is just an administrative savings of time. Another recommendation for them was using data-driven practices, which is something I obviously 100% agree with, and that's something we're going to. So I did like that Hilliard Heinz study. I wish they'd spent a little, a little more time here. There's some dissension internally from the department that they didn't spend enough time. I've spent a lot more time and, you know, been, been living it. I have also met with almost all my, not almost, all my command staff, most of them actually individually, to talk about the potential for other deployment strategies to, to be more efficient. And I think opportunities will exist for that down the road. But with a staffing level of 274 as it is right now, we're kind of in this position where if we had 10 or 20 more officers in the street, if we could get closer to that 305, we can open up the considerations for redrawing the map, et cetera, and making better efficiencies. But we're just not there right this, right now. But it's, like I said, it's a journey, not a destination. So as those opportunities present themselves, I certainly will consider them.
Got one more question for you, final question. You used two words that stood out to me that I think very much encapsulate the, the mindset of, of our constituents, of our neighbors, as well as, you know, those who occupy businesses downtown. And I, again, I, I come back to this, this word tension. You used the words overpoliced and underprotected. That is, that's a hard place to sit because to your point, there are those within our community who feel as if there's too much of a presence, obviously, and there are those who feel as if there's not enough. I'd be interested in hearing from you and, I mean, and again, this, this could probably go on for, for some time, but just some of your initial thoughts on how to successfully navigate that. And before you answer, I'd also just want to acknowledge the work that the department is doing right now, the officers. Again, I know that for all of you who are here, as well as those who aren't here, these are just, they're difficult times. And I am one, I believe that it's times like this when folk need to be invited to sit in the tension. Because for a lot of us, we don't have a choice. And so I think that there's a real growth opportunity to sit in the tension and, and really get to a place where we can hopefully get to a better understanding. But also, you know, there, there's a lot obviously that's involved with, with how we got here. But I, I think this really again encapsulates it well because this is, I think this really describes our community. You know, some again feel overpoliced, others feel underprotected. So just your thoughts on that.
Yeah, for me, that's, that's sort of when someone comes and says, you know, why did, what, why did I get pulled over for taillight? I'm, you know, busted taillight. You know, is that really something the police should be spending their time on? Maybe, maybe not, generally not. I would say that traffic stops have to be public safety driven. But if you're in a neighborhood and you see people getting stopped, or if you yourself are being targeted because you have a cracked windshield or something like that, that's a feeling when you say like, oh, now I'm, I'm overpoliced. And then call 911 because, you know, there's something real dangerous going on, some unsafe thing, and it takes 15 minutes for a police officer to get here. Now I'm feeling underprotected. So it's a balance of, we need the police officers, we need to cut down that response time, we need to make sure that the police are there when we need them. We also make sure that the activities that they're doing are embraced by the community and they're not overpolicing. They're doing the, they're doing good policing and they're doing it promptly. So finding that balance so that people don't feel either overpoliced or underprotected is where we're headed.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief, thanks, Commissioner. And I'll do a final comment and question from Commissioner Isoski, and then I'll turn it back to our city manager to close us out on this briefing and then move to the Cure Violence update. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I'll echo a lot of things that my colleague said. I remember talking to you in the, in the early days of you being here, remember sitting in this room and being very impressed by your presentation. And I'm glad that you are here leading this department. Thank you to all of your leadership that are here today. Thank you to the officers that engage every day, especially, you know, let's admit the past couple of months in these chambers have very, been difficult to be in. We felt that as my colleague talked about the tension and the trauma. And there's been a number of officers, I, I don't know all their names, who have sat here in the front and been talked to in ways that we've been, felt like we've been talked to. And I know that's not the only instances, but I think, you know, we need to continue to call out the, you know, the way to have conflict and engagement in this place without targeting individuals. So thank you. The things that I heard that were really very odd message for me, actually, city manager said it. I had written it down before you were saying it, is a holistic. This is actually a quite holistic, very detailed, which includes both tactics, measurements, as well as stories. So what you've laid out today is both a qualitative and a quantitative sort of look back as well as your plan. I'll, I'll be honest, I've, I've only been on the commission, you know, this is my third year, but this is the most detailed update that I've received. So thank you for that and thank you for those that presented or were part of the presentation. Some things that highlighted, you know, connecting to the GRCC Academy. I think this is something that our colleagues, many of us have brought up over time, talking about, how do we encourage others that are homegrown, you know, who represent the community both racially, gender-wise, to come into our ranks, share that same appreciation with Commissioner Repart about Hartside. We did some walks on some different days, drive up and down division. And, you know, to know that where many of those things are happening are just a short walk away from headquarters, where you see things that could be human trafficking, sexual trafficking, things that are tied into that, illegal drug selling is, is very concerning. So thank you for being there and for those that were involved in that. The highlight that the connections are not just with OPA. So appreciate you branded it, OPA, but there's also many other departments inside the city, and you called out a number of them, as well as I know you've made important connections to court system, our prosecutor's office and other officials. You know, I too share the same sentiments about domestic violence. I think if we overlay this information, so many of these stories, you know, I might call or hear the details are tied into a domestic violence interaction, whether it's with a family member, intimate partner, as well as the removal of guns. And I echo everything that Commissioner said about safe and look forward to that continued holistic view of how do we reduce violence, needing that sort of on-the-ground relationship and connection point, as well as the investment into programmatic and root cause analysis pieces. Another highlight certainly is the community, community engagement, the going door-to-door. I've, I've never heard those numbers, I haven't heard that, thank you. I think going door-to-door, you know, we do it when we campaign, you know? It's different, you're asking somebody to sort of come on your side and you all have to do that as well, right? And there's a whole bunch of reasons that people don't want to answer their door, right? And so to stay committed in the numbers that I heard were, were certainly impressive. So my questions, because Commissioner Lerner, I will so miss you come 2023, so I only have three questions. One specifically around technology, that was one thing that I didn't hear. I heard the use of data, which I think is important, but I didn't hear sort of a connection point to probably some of the conversations that we had last fall around community engagement sessions, listening sessions around sort of like aerial supports and things like that. Drones, I know that's been a conversation point in the past with public safety. So I'd be interested to hear, is that something that you're still looking at? What is that intention on, you know, I know it's not just drones, but I'll use drones for, for lack of a, a better word. And then my other question is really around the staffing piece. As people have heard, I know there was a pop-up event maybe last month or the month before. I've had a couple of people reach out to me. Again, it's perception or it's their feeling, I don't know for sure. But some people who have said, you know, I know family members or others who have wanted to apply, who have applied and they have not made it through the process, but maybe they got hired in another agency or another community. Is that something that you are all looking at? To Commissioner O'Connor's point about the 41, you know, you know, typically hiring is, it has been a filtering process. It's a deficit process where you, you go and go and go, try to find this purple squirrel, this perfect person who's going to do this work. But, you know, many of the things that we've engaged with on the, more of the civilian side on, like higher reach, have taken more of a asset-based approach where you open it up much wider. And instead of trying to find ways to say no, you look for ways to say yes to individuals. So I'm interested in how that hiring process is changing or how it's being informed and other considerations. I know that, again, in those 100 or more meetings, I'm sure other people might have shared that same sentiment with you. And then my last, you know, topic is just really something I think we've been challenged with on the commission as a whole, as a city as a whole, but certainly I think the police department has been as well, is how do we combat the misinformation that is happening on social media in places? I know at one of our commission meetings, I had somebody write me and say, the Grand Rapids Police Department is arresting individuals and you're blocking people in there. And I was in the chambers with you at that time. And what I so worry is that somebody sees that, that's their sentiment. How do we combat that appropriately? And maybe there's not the, maybe we can't combat every single instance of that. But I do think so much of this plays out on social media, so much of it plays out where it's like an absolute versus trying to understand what happened. I think that happened with the case of some of the, the motorcycles or the fake motorcycles or whatever they're, they're called, right, of, you know, kids who are riding around and really it was. So I feel like there's a lot of misinformation that happens. You know, maybe even to this point sometimes, I, feelings about being supportive or not. If I think about what's been in front of us in this dais over the last year related to the department, I think everything has been approved. That hasn't been the case for every single maybe agenda item. And I'm not going to say it's been unanimous, but thinking about the COPS grant, thinking about things that were investments in vehicles. And so, you know, I, I'm just very concerned that there's so much misinformation that is happening. How do we manage that? I know we have world-class communications, you also have individuals that, you know, do that work. But I think that is oftentimes, people read that, they trust that more than maybe something that we would say, something that comes out from the city. So how do we counter that to continue to build up better relationships in Grand Rapids?
And regarding that misinformation, one of the worst days I, I had on the job here was the day after we had a 16-year-old boy that was murdered. And the following day, there was all this chatter on social media, the police department's not doing anything because the offender's white and the victim's black. And it, it just blew my mind and, and brought me to a whole new reality of what, what we're facing. Because the opposite was true. We had officers that hadn't gone to sleep yet, that were working around the clock. We had, you know, dozens of police assigned to find this offender and bring him to justice, which eventually he was located in, in Georgia with outside assistance. So, but I, I just couldn't believe that we were in a place that social media would actually get traction, that people would believe that the Grand Rapids Police Department just gave up on a murder of a 16-year-old boy because of the color of the offender's skin and the victim's skin. It blew my mind. So how to combat that, I, I see the challenge. And for me, it's, I think it's just going to take a record of good communication and information over time. I know I try to make myself, as I, I hope that the media would agree, but I try to make myself as available as possible. I got a busy schedule, but I try not to turn down requests for interviews. And I try to explain, I try to answer those questions just to be as open and transparent, as honest as possible. And I think if we maintain that record of transparency with everyone, hopefully we'll get to a place where the social media has, has less of an impact or less people are bound to share or like an article which says something outrageous, like we don't care about the murder of a 16-year-old because of the color, color of the victim's skin, which blew my mind. As far as the technology piece, I, I would say the drones definitely still are on the table. Drones are great, finding missing kids, having a, a good vantage point for a large, large-scale gathering for public safety purposes, not necessarily police-related, but for just public safety in general. Finding an offender who's, you know, running through the woods or something like that. So there is, Axum was in town recently, that's our vendor for our body worn camera system. And they were, were showing us some, some new things. They had a, some drones that, that they wanted to demonstrate to us. It's something that, working with the commission and working within the bounds of the, the surveillance policy, if we can get there, I think it is a tool that's valuable. A lot of other agencies around the area have drones and use them on a regular basis, so long as it's used for proper purpose. I think they're great and I would like to get to a point where we could use those. As far as hiring standards, there's been a lot of talk like, are you going to lower your standards? Not lowering standards, we are changing standards to meet, meet, you know, the reality of the day. And that is one of the standards we changed when I first started was, you know, we had a list of potential recruits and, and two of them we were considering eliminating because of, they both had a couple prior marijuana usages. And I looked at it and I said, geez, driving in here for, you know, in my moving truck as I came in, I saw so many advertisements for legalized marijuana, you know, on the side of the highway. I'm like, if we keep this up, we're never going to have any recruits come 2024. So I'm like, I, I can sense the culture here. So, you know, it's the same thing. And I brought it to my PCAT team that day, I was like, hey, what do you, you know, I'm trying to get a sense of the culture here. They're like, well, would you, you know, eliminate a recruit who had drank vodka four times when they were 20 years old? I was like, no, I wouldn't. They're like, okay, well, there's your answer. So we are making sure that our standards meet the, the times. I have heard stories about qualified candidates who were rejected here, who went elsewhere. I wish that whoever was rejected would reapply now so we could take another look because we really do need the, the recruits to come in. But those standards are always under evaluation and I think everybody's got, got, going to get a fair shot while I'm the chief. Hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Chief. And Chief, I'm just gonna thank you for referencing the tragic case with the 16-year-old victim. I think every single one of us were startled and, and quite frankly shocked at some of the misinformation we saw on social media related to that case. Just a real tragedy. So thank you for referencing that. All right, city manager, I think we will close this briefing. Again, I add my thanks, it was incredibly comprehensive and thorough. And I know a lot of work has gone into this. It was on your agenda since the day you started and, and I appreciate all the work. So, city manager, you want to close before we move to Cure Violence?
Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple of action items that you can look forward to that will help advance the, the chief's effort to build engagement and communication. We've talked about upcoming meetings of the city commission and having an opportunity for more resident